Okay. All set, Cody? Okay, thank you. This meeting of the Coventry Town Council will now come to order at 6:02 PM. Roll call, Mrs. Shockley.
Here.
Mrs. Lima.
Here.
Ms. Ludwig.
Here.
Ms. LeBlanc.
Here.
Mrs. Dixon.
Here.
May I have motion to table the first executive session agenda item because the candidate has withdrawn his application.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mr. Shockley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig. Ms. Ludwig, excuse me.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. May I have a motion to adjourn into executive session at 6:03 PM for the following. Close pursuant to Rhode Island general law 42465A12, discussion performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons. Specifically for the council to discuss evaluation of the town manager. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Mrs. Shockley.
Yes.
Mrs. Lima.
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig.
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc.
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon. Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. We are now going to adjourn into executive session. Thank you.
Welcome to the, welcome to those members of the public who are here with us today. We're happy to see you. We will now, we are now resumed in public session. May I have a motion to adjourn from the executive session at 7:32 PM?
So moved.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Roll call. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. May I have a motion to steal the minutes of the executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Roll call. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Uh, the council met in executive session for the following, closed pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 42465A12. Discussion of job performance, character, physical or mental health of a person or persons, specifically for the council to discuss evaluation of the town manager. A discussion took place. No votes were taken. Right now, I would like to ask the Coventry Junior ROTC to present the colors and to lead us in the pledge. Please stand. The Town of Coventry and the Town Council want to acknowledge the great sacrifices that all members who are veterans uh, make for us every single day of their lives in addition to the time that they served. And we have a special proclamation. Um, our vice president, Ms. Ludwig, will read the proclamation. Ms. Ludwig.
Uh, first, can we please have Dennis Korski and Dominic Guglielmo please come forward? Is Stephen Fernandez also here?
Yes.
And just to check, is Janie Deptula here? Okay. So we're going to read the proclamation, but I'd also like to ask that any veterans in the room, if you feel comfortable, if you would stand so we can also recognize you while I read the proclamation. The Town of Coventry, whereas the uh, women and men who have served in the US Armed Forces of the United States of America have made major contributions towards the preservation of the freedom of this nation and its people. And whereas hundreds of thousands of Americans have given their lives or sustained injuries while serving in the armed forces during the past century, and whereas our veterans are brave and selfless individuals who, when duty called, willingly put themselves in harm's way to defend the lives and liberty of others. And whereas their abiding patriotism and enduring devotion to the ideals on which the United States is founded can never fail to inspire us. Now therefore be it resolved that the Honorable Town Council of the Town of Coventry, on behalf of its citizens, extends its sincerest respect and appreciation to all veterans of the United States and the Town of Coventry. We thank you for your service and we honor you today and this Veterans Day 2021.
Yes, sir. Want to ask the Coventry High School Junior ROTC to retire the colors, please. Thank you, members of the Coventry High School Junior ROTC for coming out this evening on this special night for us and for all veterans. Thank you.
Point of order, uh, council president? Um, I just wanted to make a motion to amend the agenda for this evening.
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to move item E, public comment, ahead of item D on the consent agenda, please.
May I have a motion? We have a motion.
I'll second it.
Second. Okay. Vote. Ms. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Five yeas, no nays. Public comment is now moved. Thank you. We're on agenda item C3, approval of town council meeting minutes for August 31st, 2021. Madam Clerk, did you receive any corrections for August 31st, 2021? Reference pages seven to 12.
Yes, I did.
Have you made the corrections?
Yes, I did.
Thank you, member of the council. May I have a motion to accept the amended minutes for August 31st, 2021?
Uh, miss, excuse me, very quickly, I had one last minute change, just to make sure it goes in there.
Yes.
Um, so, uh, Mr. Voice, so on the, uh, page seven of 43 of the document, I think we missed one member of the council in the, in the roll call. Did anyone submit that?
I did.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll accept that as a friendly amendment.
Okay. Um, motion to accept the amended minutes for August 31st, 2021?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays. The motion passes. Uh, the next item is agenda item C3, president update. Uh, first of all, uh, this is something that you've all heard from me many, many times, but I'll keep on saying it. Uh, we are very, very dedicated as a council to, um, activate and to perpetuate good boards and commissions in our town, and we interview every single person who applies, so please do apply. We're still looking for members for the Charter Review Commission. We anticipate starting the Charter Review Commission in December, and we will be appointing some members this evening, but we need a few more members. We need to be, uh, we have openings on the Conservation Commission. That's going to be activated, and we've already started to, uh, get them moving. Uh, two openings or three openings full and two alternate for the sewer subcommittee. One land trust opening anticipated in November, this month. One sewer assessment board of review member needed for starting in November. We have nine openings on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We've had some very enthusiastic, very, very highly qualified people to come forth. They've been interviewed, and we will be appointing some members to Parks and Recreation, but we do need more. We have one to two openings on the Coventry School Building Committee. One of these is due to the resignation of a person whose job commitments prevent him from continuing to serve on a regular basis. And all applications are available online at CoventryRI.org. Additionally, I'd like to give you some updates for meetings that the council is having in November, because these are important dates for you to consider attending. On Saturday, November 13th, we will have a strategic planning session. This is a public session. It'll be an all-day meeting. And Mr. Marshawn, our town manager, will provide more details during his update. But we want you to understand the strategic planning session is for the council to start thinking about the priority projects that we have, and start really identifying what is our mission, what is our vision, what are our values as a community. On Monday, November 22nd, the town council meeting includes an update by the Coventry Building Committee on the school improvement project, and an overview of COVID funds received by the town, and restrictions and allowances for use of the funds. A public hearing on the use of COVID funds will be held at a later date, once we get it advertised appropriately. On Monday, the 29th, with, this may be a special meeting of the town council. The town council date, attentive date for vote on the school improvement project, um, and a hearing on COVID funds. And Monday, December 20th, a town council meeting. That will be our last meeting in December. So we hope that some of you will put these dates in your calendar, and please do attend. These are all very critical meetings for our town, and the council will be making very important decisions on your behalf. Um, next, Veterans Day ceremony starts in Coventry at the Anthony Green, across from the Laurel Avenue Bridge, on Thursday, November 11th at 11:00 AM. And then it moves to three other locations for ceremonies. Uh, please join your council members in attending. So I know I'll be there November 11th at 11 o'clock, the Anthony, uh, Green. And then we move for short ceremonies at three other locations, so we hope you will attend. Um, our next agenda item is an update by our town manager, Mr. Ben Marshawn. Mr. Marshawn?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, just to, uh, give a little more detail, the town will be having a strategic planning, uh, work session this Saturday, uh, November 13th at 8:00 AM at the Marriott Residence Inn at the Center of New England. Uh, this will be an all-day, uh, session where we'll be discussing the priorities and needs of the, of the town, uh, with respect, respect to all departments, and, uh, as President Dixon mentioned, uh, a vision and a mission for the direction of this town and how we can help it grow and prosper in the future.
Thank you very much. Um, public comment. We have had a mo- motion which was approved to move public comment up to this point in the meeting. So I would invite anyone who is here, um, if you would like to make some public comment, uh, please raise your hand. I will recognize you. You can come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. Um, if you are on Zoom, please raise your hand, and the technology specialist will allow you in. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment at this time? Yes, please stand. Please come forward. Please state your name and address, please. Is your microphone on?
Sorry. Ernest Nardolillo, 84 Coventry Drive. I would just like to, um, remind you guys to take into consideration the attendance tonight for the sewer issue that's on the agenda. Obviously, the showing of support here tonight is clearly, clearly for people that do not want the sewers, so I just want you guys to please keep that in mind for your vote later on. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other member of the public who would like to speak this evening during public comment? Yes, please. Please stand. Come forward to the, come forward to the podium. State your name and address, please.
Nathan Dowen, 9 Minglewood Drive, Coventry. Um, I brought a few of my friends here, new residents in Coventry on Minglewood Drive. We've been experiencing a couple of issues with, uh, one of the builders that has been approved to build in the Town of Coventry. The biggest issue that we're facing right now is we are unable to receive postal mail deliveries. Been going back and forth with the builder, with the postal service, with some of the members of the council, trying to get this resolved, and we have made almost zero progress.
Go ahead, please.
So we've been working to get this resolved. Um, we're hearing different stories from different sides. And unfortunately, all of us residents feel that we're kind of in the middle here. Um, we purchased a home that was supposed to be built and completed by a builder. The builder refuses to put in and follow the rules of the postal service, uh, was told about them a year ago, refuses to acknowledge them, apparently has a history in the Town of Coventry of doing this, and continues to be approved to build things. The Town of Coventry is really the only player in this game that can stop this from happening in the future, and can do something about getting us the approval to have postal mail delivered to our homes. The post office has agreed to a concession and will allow the 17 homes on this road to have postal service, as long as the Town of Coventry can come up with some solution to make sure that this doesn't happen again in the future. Seems like a pretty easy checkbox for me. Any sort of approvals in the future for building plans, permits, you just have to make sure that the postal regulations are met. Um, so I'm here to ask that this is taken into consideration and taken seriously, and that we have some communications to move this forward quickly. We don't have access to postal mail. As you know, medicines come through the mail. Almost everything you buy online now comes last mile delivery through the postal service. My friends here are spending 25 to 40 minutes every day going to get their mail. We're having to deal with the same lines. There's no expedited process for any of this. And again, we have no way to solve this. The answer is to put in a community box. We don't have any community land to do that. So we have no options to make this happen, so we're calling on the Town of Coventry to make this happen for us.
Okay, thank you. Uh, would you please put, put your name and address on a piece of paper, give it to our town manager, and then he can follow through on this?
I have all his information, Ann.
You have all his information?
Yes.
Okay, fine.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Nathan.
Are there any other members of the public who would like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
My name is David Perata. I live at 11 Minglewood Road. I just want to confirm what my neighbor has said. It's becoming a very, it's an inconvenience to have to go to the post office, okay? Not essentially every day, but every other day. I've just moved in from the state of Connecticut, and there are a lot of things now that I have to get through the mail, for things, um, part of the change of address. My driver's license, okay? I'm waiting for that to come in. Packages, things like that. I don't understand what the situation here is. I don't understand what the situation here is, or how it got this way, okay? This was unbeknownst to me when I bought the house, okay? Wondering about, you know, putting a mailbox on the street, and then finding out that there's this issue going on between the builder and the postmaster. My opinion, it's the town's responsibility, okay, to come to the accommodation with the postmaster, reaffirming what any builder who builds in this town should be doing upfront. There's another 32 houses that are being built just up the road from us by the same builder. Is this going to be the same situation? So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Our manager will look into this situation. And the other other comments from members of the public who are here. I'll also remind you that at the end of the meeting, we will also have public comment again. This gives an opportunity for those who wanted to speak, who do not want to wait till the end of the meeting to, to be on the record as making a comment. No other comments? What about comments from members who are on Zoom? One, would you please bring that person in? For the person on Zoom, would you please state your name and your address, and make your comment, please?
Ray Horbert, 21 Dixie Road. I live in the Briar Point neighborhood. It seems more probable than not that sewers will be installed at some point in the future. We were actually up next when the project got put on hold a few years ago. Being in limbo for years, not knowing when the sewer is going to be installed, is a burden for homeowners needing to replace their septic systems, trying to make a decision on moving, or in my case, putting an addition on my home that I have outgrown, as my family has. If you do live close to the lake, and you need to replace your septic system, in most cases, it will cost more than $30,000. So being in a situation not knowing when the sewers will be coming, or having to replace your system and spending that money, is a tough predicament to be in. So I, I think having some clarity as to what's going to happen and when will be very helpful. And that's pretty much it.
Thank you so much for joining us on Zoom, we appreciate it. Are there any other comments from members on Zoom, or any members of the public here? Okay, seeing none, I will move on to the next agenda item. This is D1. May I have a motion to move the December 13th meeting to December 20th?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. By moving the date, it provides us additional time for deliberation on the bond vote. It provides time for additional items to be on the agenda before the end of the year. Any discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Next item, D2, performance of common area maintenance services at the Coventry landfill PRP group site on Arnold Road. Reference pages 13 to 15. Madam Clerk, please read the resolution on page 15.
Resolution approving an agreement for the performance of common area maintenance services at the former Coventry landfill site on Arnold Road between the town of Coventry and the Coventry landfill group. Resolve, the town council of the town of Coventry authorizes the town manager to execute an agreement between the town of Coventry and the Coventry landfill group for the common area maintenance pertaining to the post closure site of the Arnold Road landfill.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Discussion, Mr. McGee, would you like to speak to this resolution, please?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. As Mr. Marshon will attest to, the group, including GGA Environmental, had came to the town and asked us to put together a proposal to provide services. And that included grading of the road, grass cutting, snow plowing if needed, and maintenance of the bottom of the basins. We put together, I put together a price based upon the requirements of the closure agreement, so that the town wouldn't have any other contractor on town site, especially if there's going to be a solo farm there in the future, that we would have provision to do that, and the town would get paid for those services on an annual basis. And we presented that to the group, they found it to be acceptable, and put together a lease agreement, agreement. And we're waiting for word to go from the council, and I'll go back to start the service and keep the area around the actual landfill itself clean and cut, so that the residents and everyone in town doesn't have a distraction there.
Thank you. Mr. McGee, I'm going to ask for Mr. Marshon for any of his comments. So please stay at, stay at the podium, so we can have discussion and questions by the council, okay?
Of course.
Thank you. Mr. Marshon, any comments?
Yeah, just kind of in a short-term and long-term view of this town property. The town is one of the, is actually a member and part of the Coventry landfill group. There's a group of entities that are responsible for the post closure operation and maintenance. And funds were set aside in escrow to pay for all of the post closure and maintenance costs over the next 25 years. And so that is the source of funds which will pay for the service of maintaining the area. And as Mr. McGee said, we had the opportunity to bid on this. They did get other bids, and we were the most competitive bid. And I will say I advised Mr. McGee to make sure we had a decent admin fee, so we were not just doing it for cost. And so this is a positive lease opportunity for the town. And in the short term, it brings in revenue to maintain an area that we're very interested in maintaining. But long-term, there's a potential for, at least there's been some talk and interest on the part of the rest of the landfill group, that they may want to negotiate an exit from their responsibilities and the maintenance of the landfill. And it would ultimately be the town's responsibility to own, maintain everything. And while that talk has just been talk, there may be a good reason to reach an agreement or not. But at this point, if the town were to own it, it makes sense that the town were to maintain it. So it makes sense in the short term and long term.
Okay, thank you. Questions from members of the council? Mrs. Lima?
How is this affected when we move forward with the solar agreement for that property?
It won't be impacted, except for the fact that we maintain the grading of the road and access, and the solar array, if that gets approved and during the planning process is a major development. That's largely on top of the landfill and will not be in the areas that we need to maintain. It'll just be the access road that we share.
So, I'm just, I'm not familiar with the agreement. So we're, we're essentially doing landscaping and plowing for access to what within that property?
So most of the landfill is covered with astroturf, and it's not maintainable. So it's really just around the edges where weeds might grow up, that we keep that knocked down and looking nice and trim. There's the drainage basins, or the, yeah. And, and so there's areas that need to be maintained and need attention. It doesn't take much, it's really kind of a once-a-year kind of a thing. We just get out there and make sure everything's cleaned up. But otherwise, it's not a big.
Does a lot of what we maintain, but private property, is that part of it? Like residents?
No.
There's a buffer there?
Yes, it'll be the perimeter area between the fence and Arnold Road, outside and inside. Completely around, so there's no other properties other than landfill properties itself. The slopes of the basins, grading the road once a year. Once the snow gets above six inches, we would go in and plow it. And it's pretty basic. And we provided them with a, with a lock for five years on the pricing. But after five years, it would be 3% based upon the cost, cost index. It would be increased each year based upon that going forward. And then they could, again, in the next five years, the bodies could decide whether or not they want to revisit that, rebid it, or continue it.
And then the, if the solar project happens, those folks, if they have to go in and maintain the panels, have to use this road to get in there, I assume?
Yeah.
Are there other questions from members of the council? Okay, then I'll ask for a roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Mrs. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes. Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, ma'am.
The next item is D3, National Grid Verizon Pole Relocation Request for Poles 26 and 27 and anchors on East Shore Drive, reference pages 16 to 18. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, may I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, Mr. McGee, do you have anything to add about this? Mr. Marshon?
This is a simple pole relocation for development activity that's going in the area, and they need town council to approve it.
Any other questions by members of the council? Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Shockley? Yes. Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwig?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Yes, five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. Thank you. The next item is Item D4. This agenda item was submitted by Mr. LeBlanc, and Mrs. Lima supported the discussion. I read the agenda item. Discussion, Town Council Acting as Sewer Commission to Discuss and Vote to Accept or Reject the Addition of Briar Point Area and Coventry Drive to the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management's Office of Water Resources Project Priority List. A discussion will follow. At any time, a member of the council may offer a motion, and I will then call for a second and discussion, and then we will vote on the motion. The motion may also be amended. As a point of information and clarity, this is a discussion on the streets named on the DEM priority list. It is not a discussion on the process that we use to add streets to the list. Another point of clarity and information, the October 2016 Coventry Facilities Plan lists six projects, one of which is Briar Point, and one is Hopkins Hill East that includes Coventry Boulevard. We, as a council, voted to have the manager write an RFP to update this particular plan. So first of all, I'm going to start off with two questions to our legal counsel, Mr. Docostino. What would be the impact of taking the streets off the DEM priority list? And is there any way by which Coventry may keep its name in the queue for potential funding, should it become available? Let us start the discussion, Mr. Docostino.
Thank you, Madam President. So the impact of removing a, a street from the DEM list is that under the program guidelines, there would be no funding from any DEM assistance program towards any type of improve wastewater improvement project. So once you're removed from the list, you're removed from the list, until you're put back on the list. The answer to your second question is, there is no mechanism under the applicable regulations to allow Coventry to keep a placeholder, if you will, without having specific projects on the priority list.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're open for discussion now. Council members, any questions, discussions? Ms. LeBlanc?
So I just want to first start off with saying, one of the main reasons why I asked for this item to be added to this agenda is Coventry Drive has now signed a second petition. The first petition they signed was back in 2017, and the majority of the homeowners on Coventry Drive stated publicly that they did not want sewers. Then, without town council approval, Coventry Drive ended up back on this priority list. And now we have a second petition with 33 signatures, again, the majority of the street saying that they don't want sewers. It's very easy for people who don't live on the street to tell a certain street that they're going to get sewers. I believe that the town council should be approving any streets that get added to this priority list. And to Mr. Docostino's comments, this listing is for FY 2022. So if we're not going to have shovels in the ground during FY 22, I don't even think we need our name in the queue. And maybe Mr. Marshon can answer this question. But is it your expectation that shovels, shovels were going to be in the ground during FY 22? So in my opinion, we don't even need a placeholder on this list. And again, I just want, in closing, I want to say that the town council should be responsible for adding any streets to this statewide priority list.
Okay, thank you, Ms. LeBlanc. Any other council members?
Ms. Ludwig? Can I ask us a clarifying question? Is, is this an annual list that they put out, or how does that work?
Typically, it is an annual list. I was told in August by our engineering consultant Weston and Sampson that they would not be doing an eligibility list in '22. So this is for '22 and '23. And with that understanding, and a, and a very short time window to make a decision, that's how those projects were put forward on the list as a placeholder for the town, to have an interest in any revenue that may, may come.
And just a follow-up comment. So I will reiterate a point Mr. LeBlanc made earlier about the shovels in the ground comment. So I was, I was in that conversation earlier this year when we discussed that at the sewer subcommittee. And it was, it was pretty well-known across the group that it, it's at least two years from the time you make decisions to the time shovels are in the ground. So I, I am less concerned personally with streets on the list, considering it's for '22, '23, since we have not even come up with the streets.
Okay, thank you. Other comments, Mrs. Lima?
Um, so my comments tonight about this, and removing from the list. One, I'd like to see them removed, not as a personal attack against the town manager or anything against the judgment call. I'd like to stick to my promises and my responsibility to represent my constituents. As Briar Point is a neighborhood within my district. And I don't think anybody in that neighborhood even knows about what's going on right now. And in the interest of transparency and really flushing things out, and making sure there's opportunity for public comment and input, I'd like to see us remove this and move forward with more thoughtful and planned sewer infrastructure planning, instead of ramming things through at the last minute when there's, and something that comes up like this. We, it's pretty evident to me in my short term on the council that we've had a very mismanaged sewer program. And it's one of the things that encouraged me and fired me up to run for, for office here in Coventry. So this hits home, and I just want to make sure that we are being really thoughtful about the decisions that we make, and really understanding the impact that it has on residents to see those price tags and those assessments, and to even think about that prospect. You know, I don't have anyone who lives in District 1 who's experiencing the issues with wind turbines, but I can certainly have empathy for, for that situation. And we want to make sure that I do everything in my power to provide, if, if, if the situation was reversed. So more or less, I'd like to, one, represent, because I have had constituents reach out to me on this issue asking for it to be removed. And two, I'd like to continue the work that we're trying to do on the sewer subcommittee, which is revising the current ordinance, and going out for RFP on the facilities plan, as President Dixon mentioned, and having a fully fleshed-out discussion about the future of sewers, instead of just picking streets because there happened to be blueprints ready for them. And we also need to make sure we take into account the Attorney General's recommendations that came down with respect to sewer infrastructure in town. So my vote tonight is to support residents and to support transparency and cooperation. Thank you.
Thank you. I've spoken to multiple residents about this, and, you know, as we move forward, I think this council is trying very hard to create a better sewer program. I won't reiterate everything that Mrs. Lima said, but I agree. The program needs so much change, and needs so much work to be put into it to make sure that we're moving forward in a way that we're putting these sewers where they're needed, and in certain instances where they're wanted. I also want to speak to the gentleman who called in through Zoom. This list, it's not just a fear, but if, whether you fear them going in or hope they're going in, once you're on this list, I'd like it to be that it's, it's pending, it's something to plan for. Don't get a new septic system. Don't begin, don't decide whether or not you're going to stay or leave your home, or maybe do make that decision based on this. But there's so much work going forward, and we have no intentions of moving forward with any projects in the next one, and most- in the next one and most likely two years. So I fully support allowing our residents to breathe out and not having their streets listed when we have no intentions of moving forward with any sewer program.
Thank you. Ms. Ludwick?
So I just want to reiterate a couple of things here just because I think all of us are saying some similar things. I just want to outline, because I've had a number of people email me recently or go on Facebook or just reach out and say, how and when am I going to know? Or, you know, I don't want to be on this list or I do want to be on this list. So I just want to put out my personal expectations. And then whether or not we discuss them or not, it's fine, but I'm just going to put my personal expectations. So before I am ready, as a counselor, to specifically outline streets that sewers will go on, I need the following four things to happen. I need an update of the current sewer ordinance, which is happening right now, literally happening right now. And it needs to be sent to the council for review and agreement. Number two, I need an updated sewer facilities plan, which was literally just approved a few weeks ago for the ability to go out on RFP and get a new group to do that. We have an old facilities plan by Weston and Sampson. We want a new facilities plan and an RFP to go out to the best contractor. Number three, we need a strategy planning discussion. And so I think this was mentioned earlier, but I just want to reiterate. There will be a section for us to discuss part of this and some next steps for sewer planning to get our act together, not just the streets, but what are all the things that we specifically want to see happen in a strategic planning discussion? And I believe we're going to have a small portion on Saturday also to outline what are the steps that each of us want to see. Number four, a public sewer session similar to what we did with the wind turbines, where people can come up and express concerns or questions or, you know, whatever they would like to provide. So to me, those are the least, that's at the absolute least what needs to happen before this council can pick sewers. So I'm sure there's a couple other steps, but I at least wanted to put those four things out there and let you know that all of those things are being worked on. The first three, I think we need in order to hold a successful public sewer session and then continue moving on as a council to discuss streets and economic development and where they go. So it's just a personal opinion, and maybe we can continue sharing our thoughts here just because I just feel like we are getting a lot of people saying, you know, take this street off the list or keep this street on when we know it's two years before. So in reality, I mean, we could put any street we wanted on that list. It's not going to happen in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four. So removing them at this point, whether we do or don't, it's not going to happen. If it would make citizens feel more comfortable and the survey that, I'm sorry, petition, petition that was signed and that gives you a peace of mind, I absolutely don't mind taking that off either. So that's just from my seat on what I need to see happen in order to feel comfortable moving forward. Thanks.
No active plan. There is no active plan to put in sewers. We haven't discussed it. We have not had any public forum on it. So I don't want people to get excited about we're going to put in sewers. We have not made any decisions. We have not even talked about it. There has been no discussion on the sewer program and what needs to be done to organize that program, to try to get it in the black and to keep it there. So there's lots of discussion that has to take place before decisions are made. We also, as has been mentioned by a couple of people, we have a facilities plan. It's dated two thousand sixteen. The council just approved sending out an RFP to get that updated. That would be the beginning of starting the discussion about what we want as a town and what do we think is in the best interest of the entire community. We also need, as had been mentioned, we need to have an update on the ordinances. And the sewer subcommittee has been charged with coming forth with recommendations and bringing them to the town council for discussion. And whenever we have discussions on ordinances, we have hearings on it so that people can have full input. And also, I do believe that we will lose our place in the queue, but I do believe that it's a risk the council can take because I don't think that any decision is imminent within the next couple of years about what we want to do. So I continue to have the discussion open to other members of the council. Mr. LeBlanc?
I'd like to make a couple of comments and then make a motion. First, I agree with Vice President Ludwick's comments and her opinions. I guess that's what she called them. I would just like to add that, this is my opinion, I think notices should be sent to homeowners before a street is put on this listing. I think we should have a public hearing so that the people who receive those notices can, the town council can actually listen to them and their thoughts and if they want sewers or if they don't want sewers, so we can actually hear from them. And then they would get added to this priority, the state DEM priority list. But now I'd like to make a motion. I'll make a motion to remove Briar Point Area and Coventry Drive from the Rhode Island DEM priority list for FY twenty twenty-two.
I'll second it.
Just a moment. We have a motion to remove Briar Point and Coventry, is it Coventry Boulevard? Coventry Drive, which is actually part of the Hopkins Hill East project. So do you want to include the whole project or just that particular road?
Yeah, it's just the streets, so.
It's the streets.
That's what's coming off the list, if we vote that way.
So we have a motion to remove Briar Point and.
One moment, please, if you don't mind. Is there another listing on there that includes Coventry Drive?
It's under a project called Hopkins Hill East.
When we, based on the town council's decision, our communication to DEM will be to remove the two projects that include Coventry Drive and Briar Point, whatever, such as they are.
Thank you. The projects include more streets than those two.
I just want a point of clarification. So what you're speaking to is the facilities plan update? And that, you're talking about a specific contract. This agenda item is specific to the Rhode Island DEM priority list, and only these two, the Briar Point Area and the Coventry Drive are listed. And I'm just, I made a motion to remove those two from the list.
And I'm just clarifying that those two are part of two specific projects. They're part of two projects, but I understand your motion. We will just vote on the motion. We need a second for that motion.
Sure, you gave it.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, so we have a motion to remove Briar Point and Coventry Drive from the DEM list of priorities. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes.
We are still looking for members of the sewer subcommittee.
We are now on Agenda Item F, Resolutions for Discussion and/or Action. Resolution is on page nineteen. Madam Clerk, I'm going to read this resolution because I have the list of candidates we want to appoint. Okay? Resolution of the Town Council, Resolution of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Establishing a Charter Review Commission and Appointing Nine Members to the Charter Review Commission. This evening, we will be appointing seven to the Charter Review Commission under Article fifteen, Section fifteen point twenty of the Home Rule Charter. Whereas, Section fifteen point twenty, Article fifteen of the Home Rule Charter calls for the establishing of a Charter Review Commission and the appointment of nine members to review the charter every five years or more often, if it is deemed necessary. And now therefore, be it resolved that the town council hereby appoints Ted Tracy, Scott Copley, Catherine Patno, Scott Guthrie, Robert Brennan, Michael Stevens, and Sarah Repose. May I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Roll call. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Ms. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon?
Yes.
Five yeas, no nays, the motion passes. The next item is F two, Resolution on Page twenty. Madam Clerk, I will also read that resolution because I have the list of candidates. Resolution of the Town of Coventry, State of Rhode Island, Establishing a Parks and Recreation Commission and Appointing, this evening will be four members to the Parks and Recreation Commission under Article three, Section fifteen point two four of the Home Rule Charter. Whereas, Section fifteen point two four, Article three of the Home Rule Charter calls for the establishing of a Parks and Recreation Commission and the appointing of nine members to Parks and Recreation by the town manager. And now therefore, be it resolved that the town council, the Town of Coventry, approves the town manager's appointments of the following members of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Lisa Nakowitz, Robert Lee Giddy, Sarah E. Carrera, and Reese Marie Maderos to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. May I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call vote.
Point of information. In the future, can we just have the names of people being appointed to things when we do this in the packet and in the public packet, just so we know? And also, I think the public needs to know because, you know, if someone ever had a comment or, I mean, I'm not saying people should or would, but the whole point of listing the name is the public sees who's being appointed, and they could potentially object if they wanted to. Or we just, if we can add that, if we do know ahead of time to have that listed in the agenda, that'd be great.
Thank you. Point well taken. Roll call vote. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ludwick?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon? Five yeas, no nays, the appointments are approved. Next, Agenda Item F three, Discussion on Insurance Losses for DPT for twenty twenty-two rolloff truck and twenty twenty-two backhoe truck. Reference Pages twenty-one to forty. Mr. McGee?
Evening once again. You have in your packet the letter that I provided to the town manager and for you folks regarding the current losses that we had in August. I've heard some discussions or some comments out about whether or not this was something that we should have planned for. We should have had it in our capital budget. We should have had whatever. Nobody could have planned to have a suicidal driver hit one of our rolloff trucks head-on and total the truck. We received value, actual value, book value for the truck, which was approximately thirty-four thousand. We can't buy a used truck with the same specifications, less than ninety thousand. And that's short-term, and that truck itself, if it's still available today, would only be thirteen years old. We're still buying older vehicles. Backhoe continuously caught fire at the transfer station, and it was engulfed within a matter of moments. Fire department could not put it out in time to save anything. That was, we received a check from the insurance company, Interlocal Trust, for thirty-one thousand dollars. Once again, trying to purchase a same type of year, type, is nearly impossible to get the dollar amount. The hours are in the thousands of hours. And that's the key in trying to replace a vehicle, is that how, it may not be, the age may be close, but on a truck, it could be miles. You're looking at two, three hundred thousand, four hundred thousand miles in some cases. And some of these backhoes try to replace a used backhoe, you're looking at one, two, and three thousand hours. In discussion with the town manager and finance, they asked me to do some preliminary work on finding out the availability of a twenty twenty-two rolloff truck and for a backhoe. Both of these items are integral to keeping the transfer station working. We, rolloff truck handles all the boxes that come out of the transfer station to the landfill. And the backhoe ends up being the premium truck, a premium vehicle that takes care of the day-to-day operations. We've had to pull a backhoe out of the roads and bridges division, which has slowed us doing our projects, drainage projects out there, because we've had only one vehicle to roads and bridges. Now we've used that one truck as a back, that one backhoe as a backup into the transfer station. So it's limiting what we're able to accomplish in our roads and bridges. And the truck, we have a loaner truck that we got leased, the trust is paying for for two months. We have a secondary truck that is, was only purchased as a backup truck. Again, it was a two thousand and four. It has three hundred thousand miles. It's not for day-to-day use. It's not a first-line truck. The decision, we have a reserve on a new truck, a twenty twenty-two freightliner. No obligation by the town, but at least have a build order to hold it, depending on the cost or the decision by the council to move forward. That truck can be ready in December. The manufacturer indicated that if we decide not to take it, he's got people in line. They can sell the truck, but there's no obligation trusted to buy it. However, it will greatly reduce the capability of us running the transfer station, which means we can't haul boxes of yard waste. We can't haul the day-to-day operation for drop-offs, and it's going to affect the service that we provide to the town residents. I'm here to answer any questions you have. The basic facts that are in the letter that I provided, just looking for a decision on, to be able to move forward. I know it wasn't something that we planned on. It was nothing that we could have budgeted for. It wasn't in our capital budget to replace these items. But we have money that is going to be discussed later on this month about COVID money. We also have surplus money. There's money available. Unfortunately, we did not have it budgeted. We couldn't have budgeted because we didn't have any plan. These items were going to happen. And I'm open for any comments or questions you may have.
McGee, in our packet, we don't have a specific motion, so.
No, it's just a discussion, ma'am.
Oh, it's just a discussion.
We needed to know where you folks wanted to go, if you wanted to go anywhere, before I put together a motion and hopefully bring it before the twenty seconds meeting.
It'll be before the twenty seconds. So when you say put a reserve on a twenty twenty-two, what does put a reserve on a twenty twenty-two actually mean?
All it means is they put a build order on it, put our name on it, and that if the council votes to go forward with it, we will have that truck available to us in December of twenty twenty-two. If we decide not to, then they'll rip it up, and it'll go to the next person that's waiting in line.
And how much would a reserve hold, cost us?
The reserve does not cost us a penny. There's no, nothing, doesn't cost us anything for that. There's no obligation by the town for the reserve.
And how soon do you need a decision on this to put out a reserve?
Well, we need to be able to take action on it by the twenty seconds so we can take delivery in December. Otherwise, it's going to have to go to somebody else.
So you would like an agenda item on the twenty-second, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay. Questions from members of the council? Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Ludwick?
So I definitely agree with the general sentiment that we could not have foreseen this particular, you know, suicidal driver head-on collision in general. But I do think we, including myself, and we as a council, need to do a better job at looking at emergency expenditures. So, for example, we only put, I think it was seventy K in the emergency fund for this year. And clearly, that's not enough because these kind of freak accidents happen. So that seventy K is not even enough for the backhoe, right?
No.
So.
Won't even buy a used truck.
Yeah, won't even buy a used truck. So that seventy K is, I mean, it's not going to be sufficient to run what you need it for, for the transfer station or any of these other big things that kind of come up. Secondly, we put zero into capital. And there's reasons for that. So for example, we said, okay, we have millions of dollars coming in from COVID funding. You know, it would be silly for us to ask residents for more money in capital expenditures when we have millions of dollars coming in from COVID. But now we kind of see the impact from that as well. So one of the things I asked for was a discussion on capital improvement plan at the strategic planning session. I'm hoping we can somehow get to that. And then, and I'm just making comments, so I'm sorry. I know you're standing there, so I'm like directing it at you. But, and thirdly, this happened, right? We can't do anything about the situation other than either spend more money or find another way to do this. So I'm just going to, I'm just going to give my personal opinion here. While the situation is a bit out of the ordinary, I don't find this to be a unique opportunity. So for example, when we discussed the Johnson Boulevard Pipes and, you know, the opportunity to partner with Kent County Water, that was hundreds of thousands of dollars of possible savings and working with that group, and I was in favor of that unique opportunity to use fund balance. I think in this case, what we need to do is possibly consider the ramifications of not appropriately funding the emergency balance or capital funding plan. And I would not personally be in favor of using reserve funds for this. I would be interested to see if there's another alternative way, such as that, some of the COVID funding that we used for other expenditures last year. So I, I think we're going to talk about that at a future meeting, possibly. But that, that's just where I stand right now. So I, and I know this would be a hardship on some residents who use these services, or many residents who use these services. But the, I don't, I don't personally see the unique opportunity here. I see this as a consequence that we should budget for in next year's budget.
And I agree, that's a good lesson, ma'am. However, we're talking about closing the transfer station in its entirety, which means we can't track transfer boxes. That means yard waste is not going to get trans, not even going to get picked up, never mind transported. And we're talking about everyday items, bulk pickups will stop because we have no place to bring it to. And we have to transport those boxes. Yes, we have a window that we can utilize this backup truck for, but that's not, it never was as a dependable truck. It was to get us out of a pinch for a day or two while a truck was being fixed. This can't be fixed. Thank you.
Thank you. Members of the council, Mrs. Shockley?
Yes. So not to reiterate any points, but I do wonder, is there anything in the current budget that could be given up? We hadn't thought of this at the time, but are there, we, are there trucks we do not use as much that we've just purchased that possibly we could try to get out of the lease for or resell? You know, I think we need a hierarchy of the trucks that are used. We have a lot of trucks. I am not an expert on the usage of DPW vehicles. But it seems every truck is the most important truck in DPW. This is something, like you said, it could not be planned for, but it also doesn't mean that we have the money in the budget. So are there, do we have any creative ways that we think we could be able to buy these trucks but give something else up? You know, that's how budgets are, they flow. And while I think the, if we could go back in time and make it so that everyone would know this would happen and create a capital improvement budget, we would. But right now, we're running into a place where A, COVID money's been brought up a lot as far as paying for things. I don't know how many times we've spent the COVID money at this point in our, in our heads. So I'm just wondering if there's anything within the budget that we can do, or like I said, we have numerous trucks. Are there trucks that are not used as much that possibly we should try to sell back?
May I just respond to Counselor Shockley's comments? I, I think that that's a discussion we can have on Saturday, the strategic planning session, because what it really comes down to is a hierarchy of services that we desire to provide to the community. And as I reviewed the items on the capital lease program that have all been approved for purchase, some of those vehicles won't be delivered for a full year because of the backorder, but they're also integral to our plowing operations and streets operations. So do we value covering the, the streets for the whole town equally over keeping the transfer center open? So is it this service or that service, or do we lower our level of B service to a C minus service here in order to salvage this service over here? So you bring up some really good points that we can discuss on Saturday, and that's how I would approach it.
Remember, Shockley, you done? Just want to make sure I didn't cut you off.
Yeah, I, I guess I just also want to say that if we had included these things in the budget, it probably wouldn't have passed. So that's something else that we as a council, as well as members of the community, have to think about.
I think this question is from Mr. Marshant or, or Mr. McGee. The line item that the jet, the jetback truck came out of, what was that annual budget for that line? I mean, I know we're talking about like 70,000 and some other small amounts, but I believe that amount was pretty large.
So we were spending about 78,000 a year in renting a jetback truck or having another service do the, clearing the lines and the drainage basins and stuff for the town. And we purchased that vehicle with the expectation of just a few years' return on that investment.
But what's the answer to my question, though? The line item that, that, that truck, that, that truck specific came out of it? Because I think that truck was like 400,000.
It was Public Works Operations included under the capital lease program. So the capital lease authorized a line of credit of 1.7 million.
Yep, 1.17.
1.175 million. And on that lease, we're paying 178,000 a year. So that 178,000 a year is covering the cost of all seven vehicles that were purchased under that, under that lease.
Okay. I just, because I go back to that night, and I, I felt like even though the taxpayers approved a certain amount in that budget line item, we shouldn't have front-loaded that entire amount in the first three months, and then it might have helped with offsetting some of these costs, potentially. And then my only other comment is, not just in the DPW budget, it could be cut somewhere, but in the municipal side in totality, I'm pretty sure that the Town Council can, for example, I'm not saying that we should do it tonight, but police cams, body cams, I don't know if they've been purchased yet, I don't think they, they have.
They're not even in the budget.
There was a line item for there, I guess. $64,000 is in the, in the budget. And we haven't purchased them yet, so I'm just thinking we could offset some of this cost by not doing that, but it's just an idea.
Would you like me to comment on that, Mr. James?
Ms. Mills, please. Okay. So as far as the cameras are concerned, yes, they are budgeted. And there is some legislation, and I'm not sure where it is, and maybe Dave D'Agostino can help us on that. But there is some state legislation making the body cameras requirement, so that's not going to be such an easy.
That's not, I'm just, I'm just trying to be creative. So that was just one example, and I don't know if that is going to get passed. It's definitely not going to get passed by December, and I don't think it's going to get passed by this fiscal year end, so potentially we could use that money, is my point, but.
Yeah, that would be speculation. I don't, I don't know the actual law on that, but I do know they're, they're pushing it, the State of Rhode Island is. And as far as any other areas for, for cutting, I, I don't really see too many other, we, we did have, the, the full amount is not 100% taken out of that capital budget at this point. I believe there's a little bit in there. So, I mean, it was, as you all know, it was a pretty, pretty tight budget. We went line by line by line. This is, I think, one of the first years that we had this level of detail, so I'm pretty confident that it's, it's a pretty tight budget. I don't see us coming up with that kind of money for, in another budget. I know it's been talked about, the COVID money, and I'm still working on that presentation. So I had to do some audit work, so it's coming sidetracked, but there is revenue replacement money. I don't know who said that it's been spent a lot. It seems that way. But there is, there is a decent amount of money for that. So, and I'm still crunching the numbers, so, all right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Mrs. Lima? So I just wanted to talk first about the COVID fund usage here. I know that that was suggested as a potential way to fund these vehicles. I'm uneasy about doing that because we haven't even had a conversation yet about using this money. And this is once-in-a-lifetime funds from the federal government that if we plan, use appropriately, could make a significant impact for all of Coventry. So I'd rather we not consider the COVID funds bailout money. I understand this is an unforeseen emergency, and I don't negate that fact, but we haven't even had a chance to have a discussion on the use of these funds yet, and as I said, they could have a real impact. So I, I, this sounds like we're having that discussion at the strategic session and also later council meeting, so I won't go any further on that. I just wanted to talk about the notion of new versus used vehicles, because if we go with any combination of the new vehicles proposed on page 21 of our packets, we're looking at a total cost north of $350,000, which if the rumors are true that we're only getting 10 million in federal funds, that's a significant chunk. So I, I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Ludwig that I'd like us to explore some creative solutions and have to make difficult decisions and probably plan for something like this for FY '23. And I, I mean, I don't know if it's possible that we could do, continue with the rental truck that we've been using for, for the rolloff truck, which if, if the email that we received from Mr. Marshant is correct, that is 6,000 per month to rent that. If we could use some of the, if we could use the 34,000 in insurance money to pay for that rental for the remainder of the fiscal year, it's about $48,000 to continue to rent that truck till the end of FY '22. So there's a small gap to close there after insurance money. And then the same if we decided to go the route of a used backhoe instead of a new one and using the insurance money of 31,000. If you look at the listing of the used backhoes, I believe on page 36 of the packet, if we use 31K of, of the insurance money and we go with any of the options highlighted, you're only looking at covering zero potentially to 10K in difference. So I'm not saying I have all the answers, but those are just some, and I'm not saying I'm a financial expert or know all the regulations for how to use this money or all the other circumstances, but those are just some things I started toying around with when I was reviewing agenda materials. So those are essentially my comments. And I just would be curious to hear more about why we can't be more serious about considering a used option for some of these vehicles as opposed to going brand spanking new. I understand there's mileage, I understand there's idling time and hours usage, but yeah, when we, when we're in an emergency situation, we don't necessarily have that luxury. I know that if I, if I crash my car tomorrow, I'm not getting enough insurance money to buy a completely brand-new vehicle, so I'm just trying to think practically, but those are my comments. Thank you.
Mrs. Shockley?
Just to go off of what Mrs. Lima just said, you know, I don't know the hours usage of the trucks that were, the one that caught on fire and the one that was in the accident. But I agree that if it can get us the life of the truck we would have had without this large extra expenditure this year, I think that would be the best way to go. As we look to plan moving forward, come up with things like five-year plans. Let's just say in five years, we plan on replacing these vehicles. If we buy vehicles that will give us that shelf life of the vehicle that got ruined, that we didn't plan on replacing for the next few years anyway, I think it could be the most status quo way to go and be kind of maintaining the usage of the vehicle we already had.
I don't disagree with any comments made tonight by any members of the council. Again, I'm looking for this direction, where, where we're going. And if, if the council is leaning towards, yes, replace one new, one used, or both used, just looking for some directions that we can move forward. Unfortunately, when these become available, they're not on the market very long. I had one that I looked at, went back to check on, and it was already gone. They're going, they're going within a matter of days. So I just need a direction. If the council says, spend X, you can spend X amount of dollars to get a replacement truck, or X amount of dollars to get a replacement backhoe, then it gives me somewhere to go, and we can get some, hopefully get some quick turnaround on approval to Mr. Marshant to be able to go forward and put a bid into it to purchase something within those parameters.
Mr. McGee, I think that there are like two components, or at least two components of, of a decision that you're asking us for November 22nd. One, I think it would be a good idea if you could go back and come up with a revised plan. In other words, what does a revised plan look like? Ms. Lima has made some suggestions, other members of the council have made some suggestions. What does a revised plan look like versus the, the new vehicles that you are proposing? We understand it's a very unfortunate situation. So a revised plan may have components relating to what Mrs., Ms. Ludwig suggested about what, how much money we put in reserve funds. We need to look at new versus used, we need to look at how we can limp along for a short period of time. We also need to understand better, what does the transfer station close look like? In other words, you said, well, you might have to close the transfer station. What does that look like? I heard bulk pickup, but I don't know what else that means. I heard cardboard, but I think we need to have a better idea of what services would be eliminated or greatly reduced. I don't think we have a full understanding of that. And so we need it, and the public needs it, and we do need a revised plan about how we might be able to fulfill your needs for the kinds of vehicles that you do need. And also, the other component is that on Saturday, we are having a strategic planning session. And I understand that you are going to be presenting to the council, along with other department heads, some of the needs that you have and some of the priorities that you are going to set. Now, once we hear all those priorities, we hear all the needs from all the department heads, we're going to be in a better position to make decisions from each department and including yourself about where we spend money and what we need to approve money for. So I would suggest that we're going to wait anxiously to hear your presentation on Saturday during the strategic planning session. And really would like to see some type of revised plan from you as to what kinds of other possibilities there are to, to do the work that needs to be done. Maybe that means less services, I do not know, but you're the best person to be able to present that plan to us.
I will definitely do that, ma'am, but just for, to shake everybody's memory, when COVID first hit and we had to close the transfer station and we reduced any bulk pickup, we had lines, we opened up a one Saturday every week, and we had lines for half a mile to Reed Schoolhouse. People trying to get rid of stuff to the, to the transfer station. We were then being the transport. So without using the transfer station at all, I believe that you're going to find, the residents of this town are going to find a significant impact once that service is either eliminated or reduced. And we'll put together a plan for you.
I, I understand what you're saying because I was in that line twice.
Okay.
And once, and once, once I turned around and went back home and went back toward the end of the hours, and I finally got through. So I understand what you're saying, and maybe I and many other people are going to have to be inconvenienced, I don't know. But I was able to get rid of the, the materials that I did have, so there, there are possibilities, but it may not be as convenient as we're used to.
Correct. And just to answer a couple, four more questions, Mrs. Shockley, those three vehicles that we talked about, the trucks, those are replacing 20 to 23-year-old trucks that are on the frontline now that we couldn't keep going last year. So if you were to take them out of, we're going to end up reducing the amount of time and the effective, effective ability of what we can do providing still solid services. And Mr. LeBlanc, you talked about the backhoe truck. Just this past week, we had to rent the backhoe truck for two days to do emergency jetting, which costs us about $5,000. Having our own, we can do maintenance on every, every neighborhood on a yearly basis and jet the lines out so that we don't have these emergencies and provide our own services. As the prices keep going up to take care of each catch basin, we'll be able to do this ourselves. And that's the reason why we looked at providing our own services and having it in-house that we can, we can do these services, not wait on the contractor's availability when they could get there.
I understand, Mr. McGee, but I would, I'd also like to have the transfer station remain, remain open and not have that truck. But I just wanted to say that. And then secondly, just a point of clarification here. Councilwoman Lima stated that we could use the insurance money and still rent the trucks for the rest of the year. I, I just want to make sure that that's, you agree with that comment or?
Disagree.
Without buying a brand-new vehicle.
It's $6,300 a month, and we can continue for however long we want to, to rent that for, whatever the funds that we have available to do that.
I just want to make sure, and then we can properly budget next year. So I just, that, that is a, a solid option. Just wanted to make sure that you agree with it.
Yeah, well, again, whatever 6,000, however many months we can get out of that, and if the council has the money available for us to make up the difference to June 30th, then that's fine, we do that too.
Thank you.
Okay, so that would be part of your revised plan. Maybe we'll have several options that could be presented to the council.
We'll have that for you on Saturday.
So thank you for all the research that you've done. Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Now on Agenda F, first reading of the Amendment to Chapter 137, Fire Prevention Ordinance, reference pages 41 to 43. Mrs. Lima presented this. Mrs. Lima presented this to us. And Mrs. Lima, would you like to make a motion to dispense with the reading of the ordinance? Would you like to first read the ordinance?
I don't know that I need to read it in full, but I'd be curious to know administratively what, if there was any back and forth. I, I didn't get a chance to go compare this to the copy that I received from the fire departments and the, the police departments that was originally shown to me. I think, so I don't know if anything was changed on the backend between when that copy of the revised ordinance was received and what the reading we're getting today.
Okay, Mr. Marshon, please speak to that.
Yes, there were just a couple of additional changes requested by the Central Coventry Fire District. And that was to remove the reference to the ordinance as a fire prevention ordinance and rename it an outdoor fires ordinance. And they wanted to remove the reference to the Rhode Island State Fire Marshal Safety Standards for mainly, for two reasons. One, referencing those standards necessarily involves the state and fire marshal and the enforcement process. And by excluding that, we're empowering our own police and zoning ordinance officers to enforce the ordinance ourselves directly. So it gives us more local control and discretion. And so those, those were the two primary changes that they suggested that we did incorporate with legal counsel.
Okay. My other question that I had, and I don't know if you can answer this, but the 127-1 Section D definitions on page 41 of our packet, I just want to make sure that this definition is broad enough to include anything that I could buy at the Center of New England Walmart, Home Depot, or BJ's that I could have a fire in because it wasn't completely clear to me that this would include that. But if it's one of those things where it's policy legislatively broad enough that that would include that, then that, that makes sense to me. But when I did my research, they did specifically go into naming different types of fire, I guess you could call receptacles. So I don't know if we needed to get that specific. But I know a big thing for me was just the fact that we could go to a Walmart or Home Depot or BJ's right here in town and buy something like a fire bowl or a pit or a chimney or something like that, and it wasn't even legal to use. So I don't know if we need to define that further or if you think this sufficiently covers all of that.
Chief Heiss, your department is going to have to enforce this ordinance. So I would like you to come to the podium and give some comments about what Mrs. Lima has brought forth.
Yeah, would you, would you like to see?
Oh, yeah, much better than going on my phone.
It's the definition D at the bottom of the first page.
I guess the point, the point here is, do we need to further define the word fireplace? Like, how, you know, how strict are we going to get? How stickler are we going to be busting people?
I would suggest looking at subsection C, and it says any container, which I think is general enough to include it, any container. So generally, when you have an ordinance like this, you want it to be broad enough to be all encompassing. And I, I think it is, but I'll defer to the chief for his opinion.
I think would be covered based on what's written there. Because it goes on spell out definitions of bonfire and campfire itself. Just asking about the fireplace being the definition, what the, what is a fireplace?
Yeah, I just want to be sure nobody's going to get their beans busted because, oh, it's not, it doesn't look like a traditional stone-built fireplace because the ordinance says fireplace. That's all.
Because they define the fireplace as structure built in the containment of an outdoor fire consistent of a pit that thresholds surrounding the.
Yeah, so that, like, how many people?
Backside.
So like, if someone doesn't have the screen thing over their bowl fire pit, are you going to shut that down?
No, so they, it was tried, it was, we're trying to do it the whole thing to make it feasible. And that, right now was, people couldn't have any type of fire. So I believe the definition covers, this was the fire department was looking at, and they kind of referenced some of the standards in the National Fire Standards. In my opinion, I would not, if I went there, I wouldn't, wouldn't tell someone to put it out or something like that. They would be allowed to do it, as long as it wasn't bigger than five feet or the thing, things like that.
So just for the public record, should that, should this pass in our second reading, based on this new ordinance, what would you, what would be grounds for you to stop a fire? Or tell them they need to put it out? What would, like, what would you say?
Probably one of the biggest thing would be if it's unattended, like it's recommended there. Like, you have somebody that, maybe they're intoxicated, they, that's not a reasonable person that should be having a fire. They didn't have a hose over there because it was something that is required. Those are the things we'd be more concerned with versus whether it's a bowl, whether it's a, a different type of, like a chimney or something like that. So that's what we'd be more concerned with, not necessarily. Or if they're leaving it unattended and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
We can, we can look at it further, though.
No, 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 I just wanted to make sure we were all clear. And I'm, I'm good with the notion that Mr. Marshon posed of being more broad than more specific.
Mrs. Shockley, do you have a question for the chief?
Yeah, just one more quick question, just to make sure, because it's how I read it. You still can't have a fire with, with no surroundings, so just burning wood in your backyard? Nor can you have a fire in a barrel? So brush burning and things like, or burning your own trash?
Well, it did, it did allow in there for the fire department to approve.
Okay, so that's the permitted fires.
Permitted fires.
Okay.
Would be, would be covered probably under that. The, for special permit, bring a brush and or leaves by special permit from said fire district. That's a permitted fire, but they would have to be permitted, though. Generally, if it's not, if it gets outside of that spectrum, then it wouldn't be allowed.
Okay, any other questions for Chief Heiss? Mrs. Lima?
Not a question for a chief. I just want to make a comment and say thank you to the chief, to the fire districts, to Mr. Marshon, to Mr. LeBlanc. This is something that's an example of what government can and should do when residents are overwhelmingly asking for something, a change like this to be made. And it's really simple. People just want to sit in their backyard and enjoy time with family and friends responsibly around a small fire. So I'm happy to see this move forward and happy to show that we've listened to residents and we can do something small like this for them. So thank you to all those involved, put in the work to move this ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chief Heiss.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Marshon also. Okay, this will be moved on to a second reading as soon as it can be advertised. Madam Clerk, on page 42 or 43, a second line on where it says D, recreations, that should be recreational. So please make that correction for the second reading and for the ordinance, okay? Okay, Agenda Item H, public comment. Is there any member of the public who would like to make a comment? Senator Raptakis, please come forward, give your name and address, please.
The United Raptakis 2080, New Snick Hill Road. Good evening, Madam President, members of the town council. Sorry I'm late, but I'm glad to see that the council voted unanimously to reject item number four in Section D. I just want to comment that for, for the future, I know this has been an issue the last three to four years regarding sewers and which neighborhood sewers are going to be constructed. My recommendation is that we seriously take a look at this once and for all. Create a study commission. Invite all the stakeholders to participate in a commission, the public, individuals who are interested in, in the aspect of future sewers. And make this a five to 10 to 15, 20-year plan. So we just don't pick and choose a street in this section of town or a street in that section of town. Have a goal, have a recommendation, what the requirements are. Is it a state requirement either from DEM that's requiring that sewers be constructed in a certain portion of the town? So again, instead of piecemealing, I was very surprised that we picked two streets, Coventry Drive and Briar Point, to say that we need to construct sewers. So I think overall, place a study commission like we do in the General Assembly. There's a topic, create a panel, House, Senate, public stakeholders, and really get all the information, gather all the information. It could take maybe up to a year to finalize the recommendations, approve the recommendations by the council. So this way, we have a permanent plan for the next, who knows how many years, that this is what is going to be sewed in the town of Coventry, what the costs are going to be. Those that have hardships, make sure that there's enough money to make that hardship a lot less. But we don't know where the future is going to be. There could be also a statewide program that the state is going to be funding any future sewer program. So I think that's the best course of action to take for the future. So we don't have, again, this discussion where we piecemeal what street we're going to be choosing. And lastly, Madam Chair, I know the comment was raised, I was listening in the back about body cameras. The General Assembly did pass a $15 million program to appropriate over 1,700 body cameras throughout the state. So we voiced our opposition against creating a mandate. So I'm not sure if the town is going to be paying for that body camera program. We made sure that the money was going to be appropriated. So just, I know Councilman LeBlanc brought up that issue regarding the cost. And that's it. You're welcome.
I, I did, we did have a little discussion that was issued with town planning, but we did remove, make that, make a motion to.
Yes.
We did mention that we do have an act.
We do have an active program. We've asked the Sewer Subcommittee to make recommendations to the council for changes to the ordinance. And we've also, also approved an RFP to be developed by our town manager to update the plan. So these are things that you've recommended, and we are working on it.
That is all good news.
It is all very, very good news, and thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam President.
Is there any other member of the public who would like to make a comment? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to make a comment? We see one hand up, two hands up. Would you please bring in one at a time, please? Hello, please state your name and address, please, and make your comment.
Hi, Ray Horbert, 21 Dixie Road. I'm just hoping for a little bit of clarification as to how are the timeframe as to when you think sewers would start to be installed again? I know you can't give me like an exact timeframe, just like what you, what you're thinking, just so I have like a, a good idea and I can plan accordingly.
Mr. Marshon, would you please respond to that? We have no plan.
That is right, we have no plan. We're, we're at a stage where we need to revisit the facilities plan and put together a sewer program. Right now, we do not have a single employee in charge of sewers. It's spread throughout five different employees plus our engineering consultant. And we're looking at how we can build a new program and, and put together some changes to the ordinance that the town council can get behind and support to make the process for extending sewers more fair, equitable, and affordable for residents. And, you know, all this is going to take some time. I don't envision having a plan to put shovels in the ground anywhere before 2024 and maybe not till 2025. On the other hand, it would be nice to be efficient and get that done sooner because sewers directly improve the water quality and the environmental concerns of our neighborhoods and the health of our residents. And so anything we can do to expedite this process, we will do. But until then, we're going to be working on building these plans and coming up with funding strategies and ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Marshon.
Mrs. Lima? Um, I, before you go, I just wanted to state that I, I do represent the Briar Point area. And I just want to iterate to you that I hear you. I know that there are people in that area who do want sewers. My concern is making sure that, as Mr. Marshon said, it's an equitable and affordable option. So I, I understand that there are folks in that area who want sewers and need sewers, and that area could really benefit from them. I just want to make sure that the process is efficient, optimized, and affordable. That's, that's the key word. So I, I don't want you to think that this is, this was an anti-sewer decision. It's, it's about doing this once and doing it the right way. So I do appreciate you taking the time to, to speak publicly and even staying on till the end of the meeting as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Lima. Bring in the next person who is on Zoom, please. Please state your name and your address, please.
Hi, Claire Dussette, 2 Laurie Avenue in Coventry. I was under the impression that we were going to be talking tonight about the, the school bond that the town council and the school bond committee were going to be meeting privately. And then there was going to be a discussion tonight. That was, they said, November 8th meeting. So is that something that's going to happen on Saturday, the 13th?
The school, the school, the Coventry Building Committee will be presenting an update on November 22nd. It was not ready to make, it was not ready to make a presentation this evening.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any other comments? Members of the public, people on Zoom? Okay, thank you all for participating this evening. I have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
You may have a second.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mrs. Shockley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lima?
Yes.
Ms. Ledwick?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBlanc?
Yes.
Mrs. Dixon, five yeas, no nays. We are adjourned at 9:06 PM. Thank you all.